This conference will now be recorded.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, changes to the agenda that is presented?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan and I will second it. And like all the items on the agenda, we will do a roll call vote. So Sean.
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the agenda is approved as presented. First thing on the agenda, it looks like we have Chris, who is here joining us tonight to kind of talk about the resolution for some change orders and to give us an update on how the project is going on the main street.
Okay, first of all, I'm going to make sure you can hear me okay.
Good here?
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll start with an update. Just if you've happened to look to see what's going on down there today. They're in the process of removing pavement right at the railroad tracks. Reason they're doing that is all the underground work at the railroad tracks is done. And they want to get that concrete paving done in the railroad corridor first because that way they can excuse the the flagger that they're required to have when they're working within 25 feet of the railroad. So they were removing pavement for that and getting ready to basically prepare it for paving possibly by the end of the week or certainly by early next week. They're finishing up utility work. They're doing storm sewer, mainline work west of the tracks. They're doing catch basin work east of the tracks. And they really expect to be finished with pipe work by the end of this week is what's on their schedule. But if you looked at the weather forecast for this week, it's a little questionable. So it might bring him into early next week to finish the last of the underground pipe work. Next week, they're planning to basically start grading for the roadway. And big getting that ready, prepped, gravelled, et cetera, and then probably start paving the following week, the week of the 21st. Concrete paving goes really slow because they have to do it in halves and pieces and then they do the curve. It's basically fitting a puzzle piece together. So if you watch that, you'll see it's kind of a slow process. Obviously on the screen here, you can, for the public and for yourselves, you can see some of the photos from last week's storm sewer work that was finished up up there. The mainline work that was finished east of the tracks. Any questions, I guess, on the update or kind of where things are at? Schedule wise there, where they have kind of planned to be. I know there's a lot of disappointment that they didn't try to bite off another block of underground and project. Obviously, a lot of the delays that happened early on between award and railroad and a bunch of other things really kind of pushed things off. It was, and really the concern was that they'd end up in this fall type weather trying to tackle another block and doing concrete work and sidewalk work. So and you'll kind of see that as we get into, I mean, they'll be into October by the time they're finishing the concrete sidewalk work in just the area that they're working in right now. And you start getting into that cold weather concrete that becomes an issue. So any questions on update? Okay. Moving to the change order items. Pretty straightforward. I laid out a lot of more detail on that, but I also provided you a little bit more information on just the discussion for change orders. Kind of listing in that first agenda, agenda report on page one, there are list listed kind of common examples of why change orders are done. Again, we've had a lot of discussion the last couple of council meetings. And I think it warrants a little bit more discussion of reason and purpose of change orders. And I don't want to think that change orders are a bad thing. It's more of administrative process of dotting your i's and crossing your t's and making sure everything is covered properly. Examples that I'm showing here on that first page of that agenda report. Work that was simply not anticipated and later determined it was needed. That's an example that I had for change order two, which was the vibration monitoring that we decided to add at the end of west end of the project because of those old buildings. And there's a lot more detail on that change order form if you've had a chance to look at it. Number two there, I was for change order three was materials or work for which we obviously we had not anticipated during the design and therefore needed to be included. These were lands or erosion control items that once we kind of looked at really what what needed to be done and those that were responsible for erosion control really felt that some adjustments needed to be made with materials that were being used for erosion control. So there were items we did not have pay items for. And so the change order was basically to accommodate how we could pay for the items that were more appropriate for the task at hand. Number three, that was for change order number four is discovering circumstances that warranted a design alteration. This was actually this was for a request from a resident, a property owner to have a six inch sanitary sewer service put in, for example. And we just did not have a pay item for that. And this is an item, for example, it's basically the cost is assessed. So it's really not a cost to the utility. The fourth item there I listed, change order number five. I noted here substituting an item, a pay item that was bid for an item that was more appropriate for the conditions. And this is kind of where we're working in two worlds with MINDOT world and our world. And the item that was slated for basically a pipe foundation or pipe bedding just was not appropriate for sewer and water utility work. Item that was bid was an item that more than MINDOT would use. So again, it was an item we didn't have. We needed a pay item, a way to pay for it because there was not a bid item for that. So these projects again mostly are bid as unit price, what we call unit price bids. And a lot of times there are items to cover all the work that as we come along. Most of these were actually engineer. You know, basically the engineer or the project team requesting these from the contractor. And the last example I have is a change order that will be coming to you that we've actually known about for probably at least three weeks now. If if you recall the wood timbers that were being discovered when they were doing the storm sewer tunnel crossing under the railroad. Contractor following procedure notified us immediately that they were running into a changing conditions that was going to warrant extra costs and a change order. And they have submitted since then a request for that cost. We're in the process of reviewing it. We're not necessarily in agreement with everything. We're reviewing it with our daily diaries. And we'll be negotiating that price with the contractor. Ultimately, that will become before the team will prepare the change order. And we'll be bringing that to the contractor to sign, MINDOT to sign, and then to the council to approve. And that item, for example, will be 100% paid for by MINDOT and not nothing by the city. But again, following procedure administratively, these are items that we have to take care of. So I guess probably the big
Chris, I have a question. This is I noticed that these change orders totals get added to the contract total. Is that something? You know, when we have
Four o'clock, four o'clock.
Is that something, you know, that we have in the contingency fund reason? A lot of these change orders?
Yeah, so we, and this may be more appropriate question for Mike, but again, when we account for the costs. And I know when we look at total funding, there's an amount of contingency that is planned for. MINDOT themselves also plans for contingency, but I think the way they administer it's a little bit different than we do. But in any case, how it's funded. Obviously, these various funding sources is how these will be distributed. But yes, there is contingencies that are planned. Every project pretty common that there's going to be change orders and it's going to be a little bit more common on this project just because of the size of it. There's just a lot more items that come into play. The other thing that we do on our local projects is we may plan for some things that are unexpected. We may bid an item like, oh, we might run into X, Y, or Z, and maybe we should plan for it with this bid item that we may or may not use. We don't quite have that same flexibility on these MINDOT projects because they want every item accounted for specifically where it's at and tabulated and we're just going to have quite the amount of flexibility. So so again, we have some items that need to be done and needed, you know, needed to account for by, you know, basically work items that we did not have in the bid and therefore do a change order for.
Okay.
So a lot of the process that we have to come through is bringing it to city councils. Really, this is all again, under Minnesota statutes 429 and Minnesota municipal bidding law. So basically to create, you know, transparency and accountability on what's going on during the project and, you know, changes that are happening. And any additional costs that might occur, things like that.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions or comments that Chris or Mike can handle? Go ahead, Mike.
Chuck, to answer your question is that when we put together the overall project budget with Chris and the financing and everything is that we have contingencies all across all of these categories that Chris is showing you here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sean.
Excuse me if I can finish.
Oh, go ahead, Mike, finish up.
And the piece that you're going to see that is quite different that we don't have, you know, we just about have as many change orders now as that we've had through multiple projects combined. We just don't have too much of that on city projects, but because this is a state highway project and it's different than our normal construction projects. And because of the funding sources we have, as Chris identified on the first page of his memo, that we have likely a lot more changes and issues that come because of the scope that this is a state highway project.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Sean, go ahead.
Well, Chris, when does it start hitting the bottom line of the contractor? I mean, why is it always the taxpayer that gets stuck with these extra costs? I mean, I understand it's one thing if you and the engineers say, you know what, we decided after the fact that we want to add this. But, you know, that bid came in, what, 15, 20% higher than we thought it was going to. I gotta believe there's a huge profit chunk in there. And when does it? When do these orders start hitting the contractor and just say, well, maybe you bid it wrong? And why is the taxpayer always covering these costs or don't they?
Well, and they do. And this is the part you don't necessarily see is we don't agree with every request. So the contractor will have to submit, let me back up. So most of these so far to date have been engineer, project team related requests. Okay. Example, the timber, the timbers that they're going to hit, they hit under the railroad. That is a cost that the contractor has borne so far. And they have submitted a claim that this is a legitimate request for additional additional cost. And under the contract, it's about changing conditions. They could not anticipate that during the bid. It's not really the contractor's responsibility. It's covered in the contract. So it's situations like that. And so what you don't see behind the scenes is we don't always agree with everything. We sometimes are going back and forth on pricing. We'll compare pricing that they'll give us to past bids and say, no, you need to rework this number because we can't support this price. So there are their requests that they do. We will continue to entertain them if they're legitimate, but we also are negotiating pricing. It's not just an open checkbook, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Two things, Chris, the change order number five, is that something that was not anticipated or is that just an error in the original bid?
Or Yeah, to make a long story short. Again, this is when I mentioned, we're kind of playing in two different courts. So MINDOT has their way of doing things. We have our way of doing things. And we accounted for what we call an aggregate bedding for pipe. MINDOT is covering the storm pipe, the city's covering sewer, sanitary sewer and water pipe. And to make things easy, we put all the aggregate under one bid item that MINDOT uses. And if you go back and read through the spec, it's really not appropriate for what we need it for for sewer and water. And the reason is sewer and water pipe is deeper, the aggregate that we want is a different gradation, different type of aggregate. It's more appropriate for the wet, soft conditions down in that deep soil area. So what we needed is we needed a different aggregate that we didn't have bid out. We'd spec, it was already spec'd in the plan, but it wasn't a bay item that was bid on. So we had to ask them to provide us a bid item for that. Again, negotiated the price and based on other past projects and bids.
And then secondly, this is not necessarily germane to this, but the water service issue, when we tried to get property owners to improve their lines. And we did a lot of outreach for that. Because now we're in a two-year situation, are we going to go back and try to see if we can catch a few more people to? It just made me think of it when we had this one request here for sewer line. And maybe we should try to go back and look for people that want to upgrade their water lines for the businesses.
Yep, that good question. And we are actually been doing that. Obviously, the priority was the section they're working on this year. And we made contact with every property owner again. And actually, I think we had about four or five properties that switched to six inch water services. So we are expecting a big increase on that. Again, these costs are covered by assessments. And during the off season, our inspector, our resident project representative will be reaching out to all those people on the eastern part of the project, next year's part of the project. And again, we'll be making contact with them prior to the work happening on each of those blocks to make sure that everything's final and done.
Thanks for those extra efforts. And I think it's a benefit to the city if we get more people to do it. So thank you for all that effort there.
Any other questions or comments for Chris? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the change orders.
I'll move it.
Got a motion by Rick Seiler?
Yep.
Second.
And a second by Bruce Wolf. So if there's no other questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes four to zero. Thanks, Chris. Okay, next on the agenda, Mike, are you going to kind of lead us into this regarding the, or is Ken?
I'll let Ken take this.
Okay.
I'll do an introduction on the item here. And I do want to note that we have Jim Connolly with APRO, Paul Bush, and Daleen Means with the Veterans Memorial Committee as well on the call. So if any questions, they can probably get into more detail, but a little background on the Veterans Memorial item here. So on the overhead, I just have kind of a 3D view of the final design. And as a council, hopefully you'll recall back on May 4th, the council had entered into a limited use agreement for this portion of Memorial Park, which was a 60 by 74 foot area for the new memorial to go. And one of the provisions of that limited use agreement was that the council, he provided with a final set of design plans before they start install. So we actually got those plans last week. Staff, which includes planning, building, public works, utilities, and Chris Cabot with SEH reviewed the plans. And noted that we didn't have any major concerns and that they were ready to be forwarded to the council for your final review and approval here tonight. So I think that's about all I can get for the background for you. And I just wanted to run through a couple of photos. But also wanted to give the opportunity for the veterans group to provide any other background if they would like to do so and if you would like to hear that counsel.
Okay, no, I think it'd be great to hear some additional information from the organization that's putting this together. And maybe if they could kind of give us a little timeline of what they perceive to happening this fall.
Hi, this is Daleen Means. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for having us. I just want to mention that in the center of that star, as funding permits, we are hoping to have a bronze statue saluting the main honor wall. So it'll stand on that pedestal that's sitting there. So that's the purpose of that. And we'll add that as funding comes in. So it might not happen right away. Let's see here, with regards to timing. We are hoping to break ground and have quite a few things done yet this fall, but I'll let Jim from APRO speak to that. Due to COVID, we had a delay with the granite being delivered. So with regards to a grand unveiling, that'll most likely happen in the spring.
Okay, thank you. Jim, do you want to kind of update us on the?
Yeah, Jim Connolly speaking. So we've been getting our bids rounded up. We've been working on a schedule as to when we start. We basically just want to be able to start, get in there, get the groundwork done. There's a little bit of soil correction to do, things of that nature. Just as quickly as we can. So we're getting a lot of that work done before there's any winter condition setting in or what have you. So.
I just have one question. I noticed that the memorial project may install a water service line. What is that for?
Essentially, that's for cleaning and/or having perennial plants, perennial flowers, things like that to be able to water them and maintenance. But mostly
There's no fountain of any sort on the memorial?
Correct.
Okay.
I got a quick comment if you guys are ready for it.
Go ahead, Rick.
I just want to thank the people that have been working on this. They've been working on it for quite a few years. And I just, I'm glad it's all coming together for you. So kudos to you guys and thank you for your service on this.
Well, thank you. And we couldn't thank the community and the city council and the Parks and Rec anymore from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you for your work too.
Paul, do you want to make any comments? Maybe we lost Paul.
So and Ken, with the city, we're going to be having a meeting to discuss the electric coming in to the backside of the memorial. And also with that water this fall, more likely there'll be the line put in from a curb box to a farm hydrant. And that way, next year, when that street project is in that area, then they can run the line and hook it up to the curb box.
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you brought up a good point. Our image that we're looking at on the screen does not indicate that there's any lighting of any sort, but there certainly is lighting. This area would be illuminated, the flags be illuminated.
Right. And I had talked to Bruce Reimers, and the suggestion was having lighting on the pole facing down towards the memorial. That way, there's less chance of vandalism and just a better lighting of the whole thing.
Okay. Bruce Wolf, I know you had a comment.
Yes, I just had a question. Except for the bronze statue, will everything else be completed as it's shown here, including the landscaping as part of the original project? Or is there anything else that would be done later depending upon funding?
Well, we will be adding shrubbery landscaping around the outer perimeter. The other thing that will change on here is that we will probably not have all of the dark gray. We will most likely, and we're still going to vote on this, but most likely only have the dark gray around the star only. So there's a good picture of, you know, just some kind of, you know, foliage on this particular view. And we'll work with the landscaping company, figure out, you know, what's the best thing to do there.
Any other comments?
What'd you say?
I just wonder if there's any other comments from the council or anyone else?
I think it looks fantastic.
Okay.
Did I miss anything? Paul?
I think, I'm sure with Ken and planning and Bruce Reimers involved in that stuff, I feel real comfortable that any issues or any concerns would have been addressed before it came to us. And so with that in mind, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the final design.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. Is there any other comments? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck is aye. So the passes four to zero. Again, I think as other people have reiterated, I want to thank everyone who's worked on this project. You know, not only fundraising, but bringing it to fruition. I think it's going to be an asset to our park. And I think we'll be the envy of a lot of communities that also have memorials. But this looks very very well done, very well thought out. So thank you very much for everyone's hard work on this.
We thank the city for all what you guys have done along with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, Ken, I assume this looks like a picnic shelter, looks like right up your alley.
Yeah, so the next item is the Heritage Park Picnic Shelter Project. As a council, recall, we had this picnic shelter planned for in our 2020 park board project plan. And this is paid for from our park equipment fund. And if the council recall, this is not general tax dollars. This is specifically designated from park dedication funds that we get on building permits and other new developments. So what we have had budgeted was $60,000 for this shelter. Real early on, when we were working on the shelter design, we determined that the shelter needed to be a little larger than the one that was at Settlers Park. And I'll just scan to the picture of that here. We had an area that we wanted to fit the shelter in between the basketball court and the playground at Heritage Park. And for those of you that are not aware, Heritage Park is planned to be a much larger park as the neighborhood continues to develop out of the Bezek Farm. So a larger picnic shelter was in order. And in order to get that fit a little better, we had to re-engineer the plans, enlarge the size of the shelter and up it from the one that you see here at Settlers Park, which is 16 by 26, up to a 28 by 40 foot shelter. So we had some early engineering, structural engineering with an engineer that SEH had actually recommended that we use to do that. And they helped us put together the bid spec and we got that out this summer. And we had kind of an interesting time trying to get people to bid, first of all. And then ultimately, we were able to get bids from K Wood Construction and KDB Contracting LLC. Both local contractors here in the New Prague area. And ultimately, K Wood was the low bid at $55,522. Once we realized that we had wood on board as the likely low bidder to bring that forward to the park board initially. One thing that we wanted to make sure we finished up was, you can see in this area here, there's some green space that was left between the picnic shelter and kind of the basketball court and the sidewalks around the playground. And rather than put in landscaping or rock or something and the sidewalks around the playground. And rather than put in landscaping or rock or something different, we talked to Wit, and they submitted an additional bid for about $2,600 to basically transition that entire area into the concrete and into the surrounding area. So that ultimately made the Wit bid 58,161. Some other miscellaneous items that come into play that are done by others, mainly city staff, was about $3,500 for the utility department to put in the electrical service and outlets. Because whenever we rent these, we want to make sure we have outlets for crock pots and other things like that. City staff would be doing this, specifically the park department would be doing the final topsoil and putting down seed and blanket for about $2,200. We are required for soil and water erosion requirements to put up silt fence around the project area, and that is something the city will take care of before work is beginning. Then finally, just kind of a final line item, and it's a little high from what we'll actually end up at, but about $3,400 for paint and stain. And then the other item within that line was contingency in case you run into horse oils or something we haven't previously anticipated. But that ultimately put the project at about $72,000, which was about $12,000 over the line item budget that we had on our project listing. Now, again, this is not out of the general fund budget. This is out of the park equipment fund budget. So we actually have an additional $60,000 at the beginning of August over and above paying for this project and obviously the zip line project that we're just wrapping up. And with the rising costs of construction, the lack of ability to even find contractors to get the project completed, we wanted to make sure that even though this was a little bit over the budgeted amount, that we felt it was still prudent to move forward, get this done, and get it completed so that it could be ready for basically April of 2021 to be available for the rental season. So that is the project in a nutshell. Normally, we would have a park board recommendation. We did not have a quorum at our meeting in August, and we did want to get this in front of the council anyway. Did have an informal polling of park board members, and nobody had a major concern with bringing it forward without their formal recommendation. But in order to keep it moving, we'd like your consideration of the project here tonight.
Hey, Ken?
Yes?
I'm just wondering now, so you're going to siphon off the remaining $1,200 you didn't, you couldn't pay for? You're going to be able to siphon that off of another account? Is that what you were saying?
So the park equipment fund that we're paying this project out of, even after taking out the normally budgeted amount of money, which was $60,000, we have another $60,000 in reserve for future or other projects that we could take the $12,000 from to get this project completed.
So you're going to have that in another motion, or you're doing that all in this one motion?
Oh, all in this one motion would amend that project budget. To cover all the costs out of the park equipment fund would be the recommendation.
So what you're saying, Ken, is there's $120,000 in this park fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Ken, can that be used for maintenance and stuff? Does this thing ages and needs new paint or the concrete cracks and whatever, or is it just specifically new equipment?
Yeah, so the park equipment fund by statute is only allowed to be used for new and expansion of park facilities and equipment. So you can't do any replacement or repair or maintenance with that funding. Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Ken?
I just a quick question. How far does the land go north of the playground?
Oh, it actually goes, I don't have a map here. It goes, there's a house actually on the corner of Heritage and Lexington, and it actually goes up to their south property line. So almost a normal city lot size beyond the playground from what you're seeing on the map here. But the issue is there, there's a storm line that runs through there that prohibits. We looked at putting the shelter over there, but it's not a great area, and it's a good open space for just open play was the other consideration there.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the Wit proposal and the amendment to the park fund to pay the remaining overage.
To move.
Second.
I got a motion by Bruce Wolf, second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other questions or comments. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes four to zero. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, Ken. Are they planning to start working on it this fall?
Yeah, very likely because we have in the contract that they have to have everything done by the end of April 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Ken, I assume you're going to take the next item regarding a variance on a setback?
Yep, I will. Let me get everything kind of set up for the PowerPoint here. All right. Next item on the agenda tonight is a request for variance V6 2020. This is a garage setback to the side yard by applicant David Howard. A little background on this item. So Mr. Howard lives at 109 Columbus Avenue North, and he has applied for this variance that would allow a new detached garage to be located at and that is instead of the ordinance required six foot setback. This new 24 by 44 foot garage would replace what is currently three separate existing accessory structures, which are all located basically right at a zero foot setback. They're all right on the lot line right now. So new garage would be one foot away versus these three buildings that are there now, which are right on the lot. And the main reason we want to keep it one foot from that lot line is, number one, there's a building code issue that come into play, and then obviously you have the overhang for the roof that can't go over the lot line. So one foot overhang on the roof, so kind of back up the foundation, that one foot to fit that in there. But then we'll go over some photos and things, but you'll see the north side of his property line lines up with the edge of his driveway, and he wants to continue to obviously make that an easy transition from the existing driveway into the garage and obviously pass the north side of his home as well there. One thing of note, that also he wanted to make sure that he saved a large tree in the backyard, and we'll show that in the photos here, and still allow a second vehicle to get into the garage, which would be a two stall width for the new garage. Again, the lot is very narrow, and it basically has to kind of sneak right by the north side of the home. And really not much of another option for the placement of the driveway. It is where it is, and the garage needing to line up with that to make it an easy transition into that garage from that driveway. Ultimately, the planning commission did review at their meeting on August 26, and they did vote three to zero to forward to the council tonight for a recommendation to approve. There's a overview of the area. The homes in this vicinity are older homes. They all predate zoning ordinance being in any effect at any point. So the homes obviously are replaced a little bit randomly on the lots, and that's obviously leading to the need for the variance here tonight. A little bit better zoom. It's kind of hard to see the three structures that would be removed, but one single stall garage here, and then a couple of sheds that are located directly behind that garage. But all of those are closer to the lot line than the proposed one, which would be at one feet. The red outline shows how far back that garage would be put. I know it's kind of hard to see how the driveway would be shaped to allow access into that garage, but this is the one tree that they're avoiding. It's a very nice tree that we consider a significant tree and would be in the interest of the homeowner in the neighborhood to keep that tree there. So that's kind of the reason they want to tuck it up to that north side lot line. There's a different line drawing of that, so you can kind of see how the driveway is right up to the edge of the home and right up to the edge of the lot line there. So not really any other option to move that and still get things to fit in there and keep that tree.
But it looks like a pretty big encroachment they got on it already, right?
For the existing structures, yes.
So, and that's going to disappear, so you're just getting rid of one encroachment and then having another one in the back there by just a foot or so?
Exactly. This would replace three buildings with one building that would then be one foot further away from the lot line than what you have today. And here's the existing garage today. You can see in the photo here. It's right on the lot line, the edge of the driveway in that garage lineup. So the proposal would push this garage further back, allow access from a second vehicle to make its way around that north edge of the home and the side lot line there. And you can see other homes in the area are obviously right up by Columbus Avenue as well. So, you know, zoning ordinances didn't exist when these were initially built. Here's another view of the edge of that garage right now. It's likely that the overhang goes over the lot line currently, so that will be corrected with the new garage. I do want to point out the neighboring garage is actually 10 feet from the lot line. So that gives you kind of a perspective about how the distance will be. So we don't have any concerns with the new garage and the adjacent structures either. This other photo here, you can see the corners are marked for the lot and the corner of the garage. So the garage would be six feet off the rear lot line. And there's that large tree. It's obviously the largest tree on the lot, and it would be a shame to cut that down just to move the garage farther away from that north lot line. And then just another view here. So a little hard to see. There's actually a stake marking the corner of the garage here, and then back to, this is kind of the back edge of the garage and proposed garage, and this is the rear lot line, these two stakes that are marking there. Whoop, back up.
There's no rear access to this property, correct?
No alley access. There's city garage that the utilities uses that is actually behind this property, but no alley. So with that, staff and the planning commission recommend approval of the variance to allow that new garage to be one foot in that north side lot line instead of six feet with all the findings contained in the resolution. So let me put up the photo here again for you, just so you know that is back.
Does anyone have any questions for Ken regarding this variance?
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance.
If there's no other comments, we got a motion by Sean Ryan and second by Rick Seiler. Is there any other comments? Okay, if not, we'll take a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the variance passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
David Howard, 109 Columbus Avenue. Just want to say thank you to everyone, and thank you, Ken, for all the work that you have done on this and all the help that you've provided.
Looks like you're improving a lot, so that really is very nice to see from a city standpoint, so.
Yeah, oh yeah. It'll be a big improvement. A lot of cleanup on the lots, and it should look pretty nice by the end here. And not thrilled about the material cost right now, but I'll get past that, so.
Well, good luck.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, next. Agenda number five, Ken? You guys must have been busy at the planning commission the last meeting.
We were.
It was one of the longest ones.
Yep. All right. I think I've got it loaded up here. All right. So the next item is variance V7 2020. This is a home addition to the front property line along Third Street Northwest, and the applicants are Troy and Jill Cufall. And we have, the background we'll get into here right now. So their home is located at 404 First Avenue Northwest, right across the street from the CEC and district offices up there. They're looking at constructing a 13 foot by 20 foot addition, and they would like it to be one foot five feet or one foot five inches closer to the front property line than the ordinance requirement, which is 30 feet to that lot line along Third Street. One main thing to point out here is that the addition would not be any closer to the existing structure than the home is, so they just want to line up that addition with that home. So pretty straightforward. Again, as with the last variance we had, this home was constructed before any zoning existed in the city back in 1938. And obviously, they weren't making sure that they're keeping the home at any particular setback. So it obviously doesn't need the 30 foot setback, but it's only one foot five inches off of that. We did not have any comments received on this agenda item at the planning commission meeting, and ultimately, they did recommend approval on a three to zero vote. We'll get into the air photo for you. You can see the CEC right across the street there. Zoom in a little bit for you. Existing home, attached garage, and a couple of outbuildings. So the pink area basically shows that they want to extend the backside of the home. It's kind of for a porch addition, some laundry area off the backside of the home. And again, just lining it up, and it just happens that the home doesn't need the 30 foot setback today. So looking for a one foot five inch variance there. Here is a schematic drawing. You can see this is the edge of the home along Third Street, and they're just lining that right up, so it's added on to the west side of the home. Just another drawing here. You can see the entryway, washer and dryer will be in there, and some other floor plan layout there. So really, the final item to look at here is the photos. It'd actually be behind the fence that exists, so you really won't see much of the addition anyway. But again, it's no closer than the home is today to the street. So very little impact, if any, to the visual of that neighborhood. And as you can see, other older homes in the area are much closer to the road than even the existing home and structure there. So shouldn't that be any ill effects on the neighborhood? And it should be a nice addition to the home and usability of that home for the homeowners. So staff did recommend, and the planning commission recommend, approval of the variance for that home addition, findings listed in the resolution. So with that, I can turn it back to the council if you have any other comments. And I should note the applicant is on the call here tonight. If he'd like to add anything, I forgot to do that for Dave on the last item. Troy is on the call I see here tonight.
Okay. Troy, would you like to add anything to you?
Yes, thank you. Troy Cufall, 404 First Avenue Northwest. I'm here with my wife Jill. First, I do want to thank Ken as well for all the help he's given. Very easy to work with and helpful in this whole process. The only thing I wanted to note is that when we submitted this, we weren't entirely pinned down on the design. We had asked Ken if we could go 20 feet instead of 19, which was the original application. He says that was fine because we went a foot on the north side of the house, which is going away from the setback line. But since then, we've kind of finalized the design with our build, and he recommends going 14 feet instead of 13. Ken, do you think there would be any issue if we went one foot to the west further? Not approaching the road.
I don't see any issue with that. You're still lined up with the home. I'll defer that to the council. But yeah, there's no further impact, in my opinion, if we're no closer to the road.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anyone on the council have any comments?
Ken, I just had a quick question. On the boundary survey, it refers to drain tile cleanout. Is that the normal stormwater, little green basin, or if that's referring to what drain tile is there?
Yeah, that was put in the street reconstruction when the roads were redone a few years back. Yes, just to clean out where the sump drains can connect into, and allows access for those to be more easily cleaned out, yes. That allows access for those to be easy, more easily cleaned out. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, then now in the motion, are you going to, um, need to add something in there because he changed it by a foot there or what?
No, actually I, they're not changing anything with the actual variance request. Um, he just pointed out that as far as the schematic, it actually is, um, going a foot further to the west, but not any closer to the road. So I don't actually see any need to, to change the, the resolution or anything at this point.
It's not changing the variance request.
It's not changing the variance request. Exactly.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll make a motion that we improve the variance.
Okay. I'll second that. So I got a motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by Chuck Nicolai. Is there any other comments? Questions? If not, we'll do a roll call. Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So the variance passes four, zero. So Troy and Jill, good luck on your expansion. I hope it works out for you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everything.
Good luck on that.
Thank you.
Next item, Deutschland.
All right. Give me a second to get it loaded up here.
Sure. If you're dealing with Marv, you're going to load up a lot of stuff here.
Ken, it's like I'm sitting through this planning meeting again.
We're getting through them a little quicker.
Yeah, you guys do the heavy lifting and we don't have to do that. Hey Marv, how you doing here?
Doing good.
Doing good here. How about you guys?
Pretty good.
Just moving along on the agenda, you know?
All right.
All right. We'll, we'll get into it here. Um, next item on the agenda is a, uh, resolution that would approve an amendment to the comprehensive plan, uh, for this lot in Deutschland first edition. And the applicant is Marv Deutsch, who obviously is on the call here tonight. So for any, uh, detailed questions to him and we to that point. So Mr. Deutsch did make the application to, uh, re-guide and then obviously re-zone the property in the plot of Deutschland first edition. And this is a one lot flat directly south of Walgreens, um, along Chulubski Avenue, uh, southeast. So he's looking at re-guiding and rezoning this 1.35 acre lot, uh, that would change the designation from B two community commercial to R H high density residential. Uh, what he's looking at constructing is a 43 unit apartment building. And, uh, the next item on the agenda, actually the third item, uh, following this would be a, uh, variance request related to that apartment building. But before we get to that, we're talking about the land use designation here. Um, one thing to note, and I think some of the councils are aware of this, but probably not all of members of the council. Uh, this subject site was actually platted when Walgreens was platted and developed. And the developer, um, planted that lot initially, um, for Walgreens in the north side. And this southerly lot was an outlot that had many deed restrictions on it placed on there, um, at the request of Walgreens and the developer planted it that really, really, really have limited its use, uh, for commercial purposes since that time. Um, it's a very lengthy list. I know, uh, Mr. Deutsch had to have many conversations with, uh, Walgreens and ultimately determined, um, that, um, you know, a non-commercial use might be the best way to utilize the lot. And, um, obviously looking at our land use plan and demand for, uh, rental units that also helps support that, um, notion as well. But, uh, deed restrictions is one major, um, restriction that, uh, was placed on that lot before, uh, Mr. Deutsch even bought it. Ultimately, the planning commission did hold a, uh, public hearing at its August 26th meeting. Uh, we did have one comment from the applicant, um, that noted that the rezoning was necessary due to, uh, first floor commercial below the apartments as not being viable. The only thing he pointed out was that, um, city actually had issued and then it was put on hold. A, uh, building permit for the expansion of the strip mall directly across the street, uh, at New Prague Commons. And, uh, while that project will very likely move forward in the spring, um, it just kind of shows that, um, you know, another strip mall or something of that sort, even first floor commercial probably wouldn't be as viable. Again, being, you know, one lot removed from, uh, highway visibility as this is. So that was one, uh, comment that was made at the meeting. Uh, the planning commission did vote, uh, three to zero to recommend, uh, both the re-guiding and the rezoning. Um, so obviously for the rezoning, it's hand in hand with this item. So, uh, we do have a rezoning ordinance to introduce, uh, for you tonight uh, as well. But obviously that would mean that the, uh, resolution to, uh, re-guide the land has to be approved prior to that. Let's give a little better background here. All the land that you can see in red is B two community commercial zoning. Uh, the land in the darker blue, um, is R H high density residential zoning. So right at the end of the block, uh, we'd actually rezoned about 12 years ago, um, the Praha Village property, well before Praha Village was ever proposed, but that was also zoned at one point, uh, commercial. So it would not be unusual to have, um, this site, uh, become residential. Uh, one of the things in our land use plan is that we look for, uh, transition from, um, single family to, uh, lower density multifamily to higher density multifamily and then commercial, uh, where we can get those to work. And specifically in areas where we have, uh, walkability to commercial, um, land uses that would be, um, beneficial for the occupants of the, uh, site to live at and walk to the surrounding rural areas. So we do have that with this site. We've got good transportation routes and, uh, we feel this would be a very good fit for the rezoning and help, uh, meet some of the rental market demand that we have documented in, uh, housing studies that, uh, Scott County had done, which included all of New Prague, uh, within the past few years. So another view here of, of kind of the neighborhoods. You obviously have Walgreens. You have, uh, Holy Trinity Church. Uh, the lot directly next door is undeveloped yet at this point. And then, uh, New Prague Commons, uh, development, Cobhorns and the strip mall and O'Reilly, uh, directly across the street. And then, uh, various different, um, densities and types of townhomes and, uh, detached, um, condominium type units and then, um, single family further, a couple of blocks further to the south. So good area of transitionary, uh, try, um, land uses and housing options. Then finally just a picture here for, uh, your viewing. So you get a better view of the lot. And, uh, Mr. Deutsch did already install the public infrastructure for first street on the south edge of the lot. Which doesn't show in this picture. It's a little older. I just said it was a nice, um, representation of the lot, uh, overall showing the townhomes to the south and the commercial to the north.
It's not going to affect that road that we're going to, we wanted to put in there though, huh?
No, the road's already in there. So nope, this actually would fit perfectly with the road and, um, allow that to continue to develop. Um, so the planning commission staff ultimately have two recommendations on this item from, uh, their meeting last week. Number one, uh, would be the resolution to re-guide the land to the R H high density residential zoning. Um, as with all, uh, conference plan amendment, uh, resolutions, we need a four fifths vote. And that would mean all four of you tonight because we are missing one, um, in attendance. And then the second item would be to introduce the ordinance to rezone the land. And that only needs a simple majority for the introduction here tonight. So with that, I can turn it back to the council and obviously if, uh, Mr. Deutsch has anything to add, um, certainly defer questions to him as well.
So Marv, you've, this is just going to be a complete apartment complex now?
Yeah, that's who we're looking at. The retail on the lower level is probably not going to happen. So we're just thinking apartments with a parking garage on the first level and probably an elevator and an entry to the building.
Any other comments?
The, the building would be somewhere between a three and a four story building. It just, it hasn't been a hundred percent worked out yet, the details. But, uh, with the score footage and the L-shaped building that we have designed, uh, it, it should all be well within the restrictions that, um, Ken's given us.
And we'll get into more of the building details with the variance request and.
Sure. Sure. As well. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from, uh, any questions from the council at all? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to, the first motion would be made to re-guide, um, the, uh, property to R H high density residential?
Second.
I got a second by Rick Seiler. Is there any other comments or questions at this time? Okay. If not, we'll do a roll call. Uh, Sean Ryan?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
Chuck Nicolai says aye. So we have the, uh, required four fifths of the council have passed that. So that regiding the, uh, zoning has passed. Uh, the next thing would be to, um, enter ordinance to rezone the property. I'll make a motion to rezon the property to high density residential?
Second.
I got a second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other questions or comments. As all our votes, we do a roll call for these two. So Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So that pass is also four, zero. So the next is letter C, which we'll be discussing now, Ken, regarding a variance request?
Yes. Uh, let me get everything loaded up here. All right. So item C under the Deutschland heading is the, uh, request for variance V eight, uh, 2020. And this is for front and rear setbacks for an apartment building. And again, um, the applicant is Mr. Deutsch. We'll move into the background here. So we kind of went over a lot of this, but the lot was planted here in, uh, 2020. And basically it's all been preparing the site for the construction of a, uh, possible apartment building with up to 43 units. Uh, we had done a zoning ordinance amendment, uh, earlier this year to allow, um, that many units, um, to be built here, obviously with, uh, the change that was made. So it's basically looking to maximize the density on the lot. Um, the proposed apartment building, and we'll show it on the overhead in just a minute, but, um, is in need of two variances. And, um, this is due, uh, very much so due to the unique shape of the lot. And then, uh, not just the shape of the lot, but that it's also a, uh, corner lot being located on both Chulubski Avenue Southeast and First Street Southeast as well. So you have those setbacks to contend with. So, um, what the variances are looking to reduce would be the front setback from First Street Southeast. This is the very minor variance from 30 feet to, uh, 27 feet, seven inches. So, um, that's along First Street side. And again, we'll, we'll go over the details of this in more detail in a, in a minute. And then the rear setback from, uh, 30 foot setback down to 10, uh, may sound like a lot, but we take a look at the, uh, overhead here and I'll kind of explain how that plays into, uh, the building code and and other things. Show that that, uh, really is not a concern from staff's perspective and ultimately not from the planning commission either. Uh, the applicant did note at our, uh, meeting, uh, where we reviewed the variance at the planning commission, uh, on the, last weekend, August, that, um, there's many layouts that they looked at. And, um, the one that we'll look at here tonight with kind of the L-shaped building, as Marv pointed out, was that provides for the best flow of the site and connection to the Walgreens property. There's already two, um, driveway connections there. And there's actually a cross access easement there as well. So the ability to use those, um, driveway connections is important, um, to get into and out of the property, uh, as well as the access down onto, uh, First Street. So ultimately on this item as well, the planning commission recommended approval on a three to zero vote. So the overhead, just a little better detail. So you can see the portion of, uh, First Street that, uh, Mr. Deutsch had installed previously, obviously. And, you know, he already has the curb cut there, um, for access into the property, which could potentially change with this, uh, layout. But that's where they had placed it to begin with. Then you can see the two little stub areas for driveways from Walgreens into the property currently. So those we used, um, when we show the overlay here, you'll see how those tie in, um, to provide access kind of through and around, uh, the building. So the building is kind of this L-shaped apartment building. As Marv pointed out, parking on the main floor is kind of the idea. Um, the layout with the number of units has more than enough parking. There's approximately 20 additional, um, guest parking spaces over what our, uh, zoning ordinance would require. Uh, they meet all the, uh, those green space areas for open area for people that have picnics and other recreation. Um, it really, what, what it came to be was just this unique shape of the lot and, uh, being on the two corners is having, um, 30 foot setbacks required on, uh, three sides of the lot. And, um, this configuration basically put the, uh, rear yard opposite, uh, First Street. So I put the 30 foot rear yard right along that north property line. Now, the one thing we looked at from a staff perspective was from a building code standpoint, um, there are some limitations to the number of, um, percentage of openings that can be on that side of the building. And, um, it's fine at this, uh, 10 foot setback. And the one thing that is very helpful here is that we've got a drive aisle and not another building directly north of that north lot line. So we're very comfortable with that from a, um, fire standpoint and, uh, maintaining access around the building is being maintained. So having that building be only 10 feet from that north lot line is not a concern, um, from any code, uh, building code or, uh, fire code, uh, to name a couple. And then, uh, for the building off of, uh, First Street, uh, the variance would not be required if not for this, um, kind of, we'll just call it a bend or a jog in the road. Um, and the reason that we required that jog in the road was so that, uh, First Street could meet, uh, Chulubski Avenue at more of a 90 degree angle. It's not a hundred percent at a 90 degree, but better than it would have been without that jog. So if we hadn't required that jog, they wouldn't be looking for the, the, uh, variance in that setback here. And again, it's just a setback from the road and just that small portion, um, at the, uh, basically the bend on the radius of the road there. So, um, as Marv noted, noted, this is a little, uh, more tweaking yet to be done with the layout, but uh, the bones of it are here. And, uh, if they can gain approval of the variance, they can continue to, uh, final, uh, design and details here. But, um, staff in the planning commission didn't find any, um, issues with, uh, granting the variances here. And this, uh, is a little difficult to see. I tried to overlay on an air photo. So you get an idea of the building footprint and how that lays out. But again, nothing feels crammed in. It, uh, is, uh, very workable. Um, with the site condition that they have going on there and, and those drive aisles that are already in place. So it uses what they've got to work with on the property quite well.
So Ken, who owns, who owns the driveway north?
Let me go back here. Say that again, Chuck?
You know, you, behind, you know, south of Walgreens building, there's that road and then there's the two accesses into this property?
Yep.
Who owns that piece of land there? Is that?
Right in here?
Yeah.
That's owned by Walgreens and there's an easement agreement in favor of this property to cross through that area.
Okay. That's, that was my question. Okay.
Um, this slide here just shows the setbacks, uh, for the property per the ordinance in red. You see they actually had extra room here, um, that they're more than meeting. And, um, you see the area here where they're wanting the building to go 20 foot into that rear setback and then just the few feet on the front here. So it all kind of came to how the ordinance defines our front and rear setbacks and, um, the quirk of that being in a corner lot and a unique shape there. So. So it's more than, more than reasonable to consider approval of the variance, and the planning commission obviously found that to be the case as well. Here's a schematic kind of representation photo of the general look that Marv was going for for the building. Obviously, it's not a rendering on the lot that we're looking at here, but gives you a general idea of how it could look. This is obviously two levels of apartments, but as Marv noted, it could go another floor up depending on their final design here, but we do allow structures up to 50 feet tall. She wouldn't, wouldn't have any need for a variance as far as that's concerned. So staff in the planning commission, again, did recommend approval of the variance for this front and rear setback, variances for the apartment building as proposed.
I'll move it.
Good, well, just hold on, Rick. Do we have any other questions? Okay. Marv, I just have one question. What's the timeline? Do you feel that you'd probably start construction?
Well, we're just in the planning stages right now. We're kind of checking out different options on the construction of it. I would, I would have to say probably a year and a half-ish from now is what I would think we would, we would get going. Kind of want to let the present pandemic issue at rest and start in after that. So, a year and a half from now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ken or Marv? Go ahead, Mike.
Ken, I had a question, and I know you look at this quite extensively. As I, as I look to the west edge of the property, that you've got the five-foot setback, and then you've got the parking spaces, and then the internal driveline, correct?
Yep.
Where does, in the case of a bad winter, where does the property owner go with snow removal? When you take a look at that with only, as shown as proposed, only about five feet of storage on the outside of those westerly parking stalls?
I would say some of the 20 extra spaces that they have on the site that they're not required to have, or truck it off, which a lot of commercial sites have to do as well.
All right, I just was asking just to make sure that it doesn't end up on the neighboring property for the most part.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
I just have a comment. I think this is a very challenging piece of property, especially with the deed restrictions, and we're very familiar with the property with the EDA and other issues, so I applied Marv for putting together this project, which I think is a good utilization of the land that's not been used ever since Walgreen built a building on it. So it's nice to see that there's some movement being made on it.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, Rick, if you're willing to make that motion?
Yeah, sounds good to me. It's a sound project, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler. I will second that motion. So if there's no other further questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Sean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the variance passes four-zero. Thank you, Marv, for looking for utilizing this property, and in a year and a half, we'll look forward to seeing some action.
Okay, thanks to staff, and thank you guys.
Thanks, right, thank you. Good luck, Marv. Next on the agenda, number seven, Mike.
I should have just given it to Ken, he could have continued.
Yeah, you better roll. Ken probably has to go and get a glass of water.
I do, if you want.
There you go.
Or he's probably worn out by now, I better, I better take this one. Just a brief update, we've got a meeting with the EDA in the morning, so you're kind of getting a bit of an update before they get in tomorrow morning. We had a total of 39 applications that were received for our Small Business Recovery Fund program. We determined as of Friday that four of those applications are ineligible due to the fact that they're either located outside the city limits, they're a residential home and not a commercial space, and/or that they were agricultural property located outside of the city. So we ended up with about 35 eligible properties. And so the, the next stage, and I spent the better part of today working with Lee Hall and next stage of refining the materials that will be sent out to the applicants that have been selected for review and for confirmation of eligibility for funding. And if you remember, you selected making $7,500 available, available. That was going to allow us to fund up to about 27 different businesses. And so in taking a look at that, is, he went through and did a preliminary, well, not a preliminary, but he did the, kind of, the lottery, excuse me, he created a numbering system, and then he went through a lottery selection. And so what we're going to be doing probably tomorrow, we just, as I said, finish going through the letter and all the materials that would need to go out to the businesses that are going to be looked at, we have to, that have been selected for review and confirmation of eligibility for funding. So we've got what I would term kind of the top 27 out of the 35. The other eight would go on a waiting list at this time. And so, an email with information that is required to be sent back by all of the businesses, the confirmation certifications that they have to provide, and the proposed budget organization that supports their request for the grant funds. All of those materials will, will need, come back to us to make sure that they're able to be selected for the actual grant funding and/or to confirm their eligibility. So a, a letter would go out to those 27. We'd have another letter would go out to the other eight that are on the waitlist that indicates to them that they are not selected. However, we have put them, we would be putting them on a waitlist pending how things go with the first 27. They have to, next stage has to check to make sure that they're not submitting requests for grant funding when they've received other types of funding. So we have to make sure that business owners are not essentially double dealing with different programs, whether that was the PPP program, whether it was the Scott County Funding Program, and a number of our businesses, I think there were about seven off all of the total applications that came in that qualified to receive the $15,000 in funding from Scott County. So there will be cross-checking to make sure that they don't essentially duplicate the grant funding that we have, and they have to provide expenses outside of that that to date still haven't been funded. So we're in the process of trying to finalize, like I said, we worked most of the afternoon reconfirming those materials. We hope to have them done in the morning to be able to then send out to all of the different business applicants.
So when, Mike, when you say there's 35 good applications, you're saying they're good applications in, with the basic that they, they're in city limits thing, but they really haven't gone through the really review process yet, correct?
Yeah, they've met all of the preliminary guidelines and requirements to, for me to say that they've been selected for review and confirmation of eligibility for funding. Now they have to go through and submit a number of things to put themselves in a position to actually finally qualify to be able to receive the funding.
Okay. Good.
So I think, I was really.
I thought they were gonna have.
I was really pleased that we got as many as we did, and it's nice to have too many versus few. And then following right behind us, that apparently, LaSueur County thought we did really well with the creation of our program, that they've taken our program, and as of last week, the LaSueur County Commissioners approved a similar program, and they're going to fund up to $10,000 per business. So any of the businesses that would end up being on our waitlist that may not get funded, I certainly would be in contact with them and encourage them to apply for the LaSueur County program, as well as anybody else that maybe didn't submit an application to ours. That will now be available as well, and I think their advertising will start next week on their program.
But is that just for LaSueur County businesses?
Correct.
Yeah.
Just like the Scott County was for Scott County only, and ours was in the corporate city limits, and then LaSueur County will be in LaSueur County, obviously.
That's good, good news. Anyone have any questions for Mike regarding the Small Recovery Fund program? Okay, well, thank you, Mike, and I'm sure I'll hear more about it tomorrow morning. Nick, Jim, are you gonna kind of update us on what's going on with our COVID?
I can do that. Not a lot of changes. Staff has been talking, we meet twice a week, but we've been talking about when we want to assess opening City Hall to customers. We anticipate that we'll be looking at that next week, just looking at different numbers. Again, we haven't had any real complaints about customer service. Everybody's able to be serviced via phone or computers. We're starting to have more things dropped off at City Hall with plans, or we've always been servicing anybody that wants a permit to purchase. We meet in the lobby, are out in the entryway and collect their items, make copy of what we need to, and then get them back. And when customers are called to pick up an item or something, we would meet them in the entryway also. But we do want to just look at the numbers. I know I, I watched the school numbers that schools are supposed to be basing their, their learning schedule and model on. Scott County has been trending down the last couple of weeks. They went down to under 20 now.
I'm in here, Sally.
But Rice County is trending up a little bit. LaSueur County in the last, from last, a week ago's report to this week's, or actually on Thursday, the third, they had quite a increase. They almost doubled in their numbers. They're up to 36.81 per population. So right now, we're seeing a little peak in LaSueur County. But again, I think that's what we've been discussing at our staff meetings about just assessing here what, what opening school's gonna be doing and, and doing for some of those numbers, and then take a look at possibly opening later on this month, based on those numbers then.
Okay.
As we continue to make sure we have enough PPE for all our employees, we're anticipating that when we do open up, if, if the governor has his executive orders in place yet for masks, we would supply masks for anybody that wouldn't have them so that they could enter into City Hall. We continue to deal with just employees that may have been exposed, that we follow our protocols and make sure they're isolated and, and stay out the designated time, based on the recommendations from the CDC at this time. Overall, we have a employee here and there that may be affected, but generally, it's pretty minimal.
Hasn't affected the workflow of the city?
No, I don't think so. We're keeping up, and yeah. Overall, at least the employee numbers haven't devastated our services at all yet.
Good.
That's all I have, unless Mike or Ken or anybody else has something.
I can just comment quickly, I think the council asked before about, you know, when we could get back to doing council meetings here at City Hall, and we have one quote so far from an AV company for the equipment to run the council meetings and allow a remote connection in, and it's very expensive, so we're getting another quote from another company, and we should have that within a day or two here, so I think we're getting close on that as well. But want to make sure we're getting good pricing on that. So we're, we're, we're close, and we think we have a good, good solution for you.
So to tag into that, we probably will still need to do the golf board meeting remotely this month?
I would say for sure. One of the things these suppliers for AV equipment are finding is that everything is on back order, because every city throughout the entire country is trying to set up their rooms. The last vendor I just talked to, we were number 15 on their list in the past three days of trying to get equipment ordered and put in their council room. So we're in good company, but good luck finding cameras, is kind of the, the word we found out. And we had already heard that, and I think that's why our cost from our first bid was so high, because they happen to have cameras, and they could charge that. So, well, we want to be fiscally responsible too, so.
Yeah. And also related, Care's money, we're accumulating all our receipts and everything to document that, Mike?
Yes, the staff is working on that, and assuming we get the participation, the other outside entities in supplying us with that information, we hope to have an outline for you at the 21st meeting.
Ken, Jim, I had a question. As far as COVID-related issues, I know that businesses have been handling it from a customer's service perspective, but law enforcement, have you had to respond to many COVID-related issues from people, or mask-wearing, or anything from the governor's requirements of non-compliance? Are you being, you had many responses to issues related to COVID in the community?
They've been real, very minimal. I know early on, when some of the executive orders were out, we would get phone calls. The state at that time wanted some of those calls directed to the complaint lines. Those have been taken down now, but no, over the last four weeks, we haven't had too many complaints at all. As to responding to COVID-type medicals or something, generally, dispatch's protocol is to ask questions about illness and fever and any symptoms, so we're usually made aware of that. In regards to the Department of Health sharing, sharing that information with 911 P S apps and our dispatch being able to get that information into our CAD system for dispatching officers, that's been very minimal, that even when Scott County was having a real increase in COVID cases, the, the information that dispatch was getting from the Department of Health was just, the numbers were extremely minimal, not, not really being reflective on what those numbers really were. But overall, yeah, if we have any. But overall, yeah, if we have any indication, the officers have their PPE equipment and are able to wear that and and work to keep themselves safe along with any other household members.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding COVID? And our city's response to anything? Thanks for the update, Jim. Okay, next. Mike, you need to set a date before the next meeting or no, before the end of the month to approve a initial levy that has to be presented to the state by September 30th, correct?
That's correct. Generally, it has taken us, we generally don't get it done in one meeting. Generally, is the first meeting, there's a little bit of introduction and understanding of kind of what the the picture looks like and where we're at. And then based on some preliminary discussion with the council, we typically, in many cases, made some revisions and came back and adopted that. I'm not certain that if we were to try to look next week, and I'm guessing most of you still want to be able to attend most of the Board of Commission meetings that you're involved with, that if we had one in late next week, September 17th, that we likely wouldn't be able to have the the materials ready to adopt on the 21st, which may necessitate a secondary meeting, maybe either the 23rd or 24th, just to set that preliminary levy. So if I had to give you a couple of dates, I'd say the 17th and the 23rd, trying to stay away from the Board and Commission meetings that you have on 15, 16, and 22nd.
I'd be fine with that if the 17th could be like at 7 o'clock so I could get my golfing.
I'm busy on the 17th.
What's that?
I can't make the 17th.
Okay, Sean, I'll send you, I'll send you the check.
Well, then what we could wait and try to do, if that's the case, Maggie said no on the 15th. The 16th is Planning Commission, and then we've got Council and Golf. So we we could go the 23rd with a backup to the 29th.
I'm out of town on the 23rd and 24th as well. But I would skip my, on the 16th, I could maybe miss that Planning Commission meeting if if we're doing budget stuff that's probably more important. I'll still get a chance to.
What if we shoot for the 14th?
I'm wide open on the 14th or the 15th. I can make either one of those work.
Yeah, 14th.
14th?
Let's go the 14th.
Okay.
Let's go the 14th, and then we can see how far we get. And then if we have to do it that week, the maybe the 28th or something like that.
What time do we?
We don't know yet, Rick, we're.
What time you want to do that on?
What, do you want to do it at 6 o'clock or do we want to start at 5:30? Since it's remotely, I mean, if rush hours are too bad, I guess you can get home by 5:00.
I can do it.
So 14th at 5:30? 14th at 5:30, we'll start with that one and see if that works for Maggie. And if she does, then let's plan on that. Is Patty gonna be able to get everything to us, Mike?
I'm hoping we'll have everything out to you Friday at my fingers crossed.
Okay. So let's tend to do that, and we'll see how far we get.
And then on the 28th?
Yeah, then we can determine something that last week, if we need to have an extended meeting and make the approval. Okay. So we got that date set? Next, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions on any items in the consent agenda?
I had one quick one.
Go ahead.
Mike, the the annual membership for League of Minnesota Cities, is that our total that we pay? Or is that just, does that cover our insurance part of it or?
Hold on a second.
First page accounts payable.
Under administration. The 8386.
That, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be on, that, I think there's a mistake of that being on the list. But yes, that is typically the annual amount. We generally pay that after the first of the year. And as I look at that, I think there's a mistake that I need to double check, that that may need to be removed. I think that is for next year, and we don't typically pay that, that we just got what that is beginning here, I think the first of September. But we always wait and pay it after the first of the year on a calendar year basis. And so if that was the case, we already paid the one back the first of this year. And so this one shouldn't be until next year in 21.
Okay. Has that seen any increases because of?
There was no, there was no increase in the annual fee. The only thing that changes it is based on population.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Okay. Any other question for, in the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments?
With the removal of the league bill.
Yep. Are there, yeah, you'll you'll check on that removal of the bill. Thank you, Mike. Okay. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick? Rick, are you there?
Throws up.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye.
Yeah, aye, aye.
Yep. Passes 4-0. Now we're at the miscellaneous. Ken, do you have anything additional to add?
Nothing more.
All right. Jim, how about you?
Just that I've been working with Brooke regarding next week's No Do Zinky. I believe it was scheduled for the 16th and 17th in the park. I know Glenn had had some questions about dumpster and porta potties. So I'll follow up with her again tomorrow on that. But we should be set to go with the city's involvement then.
Okay. That it?
Yes, that's all I have.
Barb, anything?
I do not, thank you.
All right, Patrick?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, did you get my article?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Nothing.
All right. Bruce?
Two things. And with the Mars Project, is there any new information or status regarding First Street Southeast? Or is that issue pretty much sometime in the very far future with Becky's and Company?
Yeah, we wanted to kind of play it by ear for what Becky's was thinking it doing. The church, obviously, would prefer that it be later than sooner. But I think the Becky's property is kind of the key feature there. So, yeah, I mean, short of that developing, there's probably not a huge need to get it through.
Well, with 40-some apartments, there's going to be a lot more congestion there. That's why I thought it'd be better for it to be done than not done. But so it seems like that's when five, 10 years from now then, or what would you expect?
I think if an apartment building goes there, that'll probably spur some interest in that property, Becky's property for more commercial uses. But I guess we'll have to kind of see how that pans out a little bit. But yeah, I mean, it's obviously to the benefit of the whole neighborhood to have that done. But we'll see. I know they don't have it actively marketed either at this point.
Okay. Secondly, this comprehensive plan with Mars Project, it just makes me wonder, that property was so full of deed restrictions that it just occurs to me that property owners can basically subvert the comprehensive plan by limiting all sorts of uses and really like this parcel, make it so broad that it's, you can't utilize the property for the, what it's zoned to do. And that almost seems like it's, something didn't seem constitutional, or maybe that's not the right word there. But it seems like a big subversion of the city's rights on the land use.
Yeah, it's a very common, very common thing throughout. I know a lot of grocery stores commonly will do that with buildings they've vacated, you know, limiting other grocery stores' competition coming in. And it's a huge problem all over. And unfortunately, there's not much of a legal standing the city has in that as they don't own the property and don't have the right to repeal those deed restrictions without the entity that put them on there. So it's a nationwide issue, mostly with grocery stores, but Walgreens is not too far off from that. Obviously, they're protecting their own interest. And yeah, it's the first time we've seen that, actually not the first time, I should say. We had, actually at the State Bank property, I think it was Nash Finch had some deed restrictions on the property that State Bank built on, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, there's a lot of issues. That's why it's, it's, it does happen once in a while. But I was just wondering if there's any state law or it's been tested in the law in the courts, but.
How much we can do?
No, that was all I had.
Okay, Sean?
Just a quick question about the mill. Is there still people there doing the maintenance on it? I had a couple neighbors that live close by that said there's a lot of pigeons and bats, and now they're worried about rats and mice and everything else and weeds. Is there anybody maintaining that property or?
Yeah, they still have lights on for the caretakers that are there. If there are specific concerns, I can get ahold of the property owner. Actually, Randy Kubis is the realtor on it, so I could let him know too. So just general animal concerns, sounds like number one. And then some other cleanup, maybe?
Yeah, I think they're just, where does this lead? They just, I couldn't answer if there's still those caretakers there. I know that the company was kept two people on through, what, the end of December, I think.
Yeah.
But I was just kind of curious where that falls, whose responsibility is that that is? Is it, is it going to be Randy or is it going to be the company still or?
Still the company at this point. But I have a meeting with Randy actually about that property later this week. So I'll, I'll talk to him about that.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, Rick, do you have anything? Are you there, Rick?
Ah, yeah. Hey, Mike?
We got Mike out of that, that's all you got.
He's got an issue with. There was a lady, you know, that, that street, it was First Avenue and Second Street Northwest. A lady almost get hit at that same corner. Can you hear me? Hear me?
First Street and what?
It was First Street and Second Avenue, or it was First Avenue and Second Street Northwest.
Yeah, Rick, Mike passed that on to me, and we're doing some extra patrol in the area. And we'll continue to do that the first few days here of school. Otherwise, we've been just watching the intersection with that.
Anything else?
I'll tell them.
Okay.
No.
The only thing I have, Ken, is census. Is the census, I'm going to be delayed or what's going on with that? Do you know?
Update I heard was there was some action taken to delay the ending of the census process in September here. But I don't know what that means exactly. At this point, I got was an email, quick update that they didn't have to wrap it up at the end of the month here. So I don't know, I'm waiting to hear more.
Okay. That's all I have. Go ahead.
A check out. A new member of the golf course was requesting recycling receptacles on the course for like cans. I don't know if that's something your, the golf board might want to talk about, if that's possible.
Okay, I'll write that down. Okay, anything else? If not, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. I think we can just do this by voice call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Passes 4-0. Good night, everyone. Thank you for your time. Stay, stay safe, please.